Lisa, I think, is everyone here?
Everyone is here now. Great.
All right, and is, are we good with the TV feed?
I believe so. We're all good to go, Sarah?
Yes, we are.
Great.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I will bring the meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission of June 7th, 2021 to order. We begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Yakaponi.
Present.
Commissioner Clements.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Ruve.
Present.
And Chair Garvey.
Present.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission will briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Does anyone have a comment that they would make, that they would like to make on this public comment item? Something that is not on the agenda? Is there anyone in the waiting room? Sarah, do you see anybody?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from our last meeting of May 3rd, 2021. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
None from me.
None from me.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I'll approve.
Second.
I'll approve we.
I think we have a motion by Commissioner Clements and a second by Commissioner Yakaponi. Thank you, Lisa. Roll call.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruve.
Yes.
And Chair Garvey.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. I'll read the procedure now before a public hear, for the public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers will be called upon by the last three digits of their phone number and should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. The first item we have, the, the public hearing item for this evening is general plan conformity determination for capital improvement projects proposed for fiscal year 2021 through 2023. Lisa, does staff have a presentation?
Yes, I will be giving the presentation to the commission this evening. Again, Lisa Forrest, Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos. And the item before you this evening is to review the two-year budget for the capital improvement program that covers the fiscal years 2021 to 2022 and then 2022 to 2023. So the recommendation before you, as indicated in the staff report, is to adopt a resolution finding that the fiscal year 2021 through 2023 capital improvement, or CIP, is in conformance with our general plan. So essentially, let me just move my screen a little bit. Thank you for your patience. Great. So essentially, the CIP, as it's indicated in the staff report, is a five-year expenditure plan that prioritizes and recommends funding for various projects throughout the city for the year 2021. So this would be beginning July 2021 all the way through June 30th, 2026. But the way that the budget is considered is, we're now back again on a two fiscal year cycle. You might remember last year and the year before, we did a one-year budget cycle. And so we are back again on a two-year budget cycle. So the item before the Planning Commission this evening, in terms of general plan conformity, is to really find that the first two years of that five-year plan is consistent with the general plan. So tonight, we'll be looking specifically at what, what has been proposed or requested by funding from the council for fiscal year 2021, 22, excuse me, there's too many twenties here. 2021 and 2022, and then 2022 and 23. So just the first two years only. And again, the, the projects in the remaining years could be changed or modified at some point. So we look at those later as the year progresses. So in terms of all the items that are before the Planning Commission this evening, they have been reviewed by the city council during their, the budget process. And we essentially started the budget process within the first quarter of this year, where we presented a budget to the city council, including any requests for projects. And so really, what you will, what this CIP component consists of are all of the projects that are intended to be funded over the next two years. And so this will include projects that have been previously funded and are ongoing, and then now includes new projects. So what we didn't see yet last year were any really new projects. And we might have had certain projects cut because of the COVID-19 pandemic and a little bit of uncertainty about, you know, the budget. So taking a conservative approach, there were no new projects, as you may have recalled, as you may recall from the last budget cycle. But in this particular one, we are, we have identified new projects going forward, and the council has looked at those, and they had a study session on that in the beginning part of May, on May 1. And then they will be considering formal adoption on June 14. So just a little bit of background in state law regarding this issue. Well, this is required to be reviewed by the Planning Commission at a duly noticed public hearing for consideration and determination of conformity with the general plan. So these were just a couple of bullet points outlined by state law, where it indicates the Planning Commission is to hold a public hearing and determine that the projects presented do conform with the adopted general plan. So the next couple of slides, I'm just going to very quickly identify each project. This is not intended to be a presentation on every single item. To do that, I would need a lot of other of my City of San Carlos colleagues here to describe. A lot of these are ongoing maintenance. And, and well, and if you have any questions, we can certainly talk through them. Just a couple of things that I, I do want to point out before we get into this is that the packet, of course, that you have is not only the staff report, but it has three, three attachments. Of course, the first one is the draft resolution, should you find that these projects conform to the general plan. And in the staff report, it does indicate a number of general plan goals and policies and action items that are consistent with these projects. And certainly, you know, I, I like to use this example where, you know, a city, if it didn't have anywhere identified in its general plan for a baseball stadium, why is it putting money towards a baseball stadium? That's an extreme example. A lot, but suffice to say that a lot of the work projects that you're going to see here, in fact, do meet many of the city's goals, objectives, and action items that are identified specifically in the general plan. But I won't go through them here, but certainly I'm available to answer any questions if the commission has any. So in the packet, you have the draft resolution. And there is an attachment that includes the budget detail for every project, the exact dollars amount that are being allocated for that particular project. So you have that in the packet. And then the packet also has the project identification and description sheets for all of the new projects going forward. And as an example, one of them you'll see that sort of pertains to kind of what we do in our area in terms of planning. There's a lot of projects that are not planning and not community development. There are public works and parks and so forth, as you probably saw. But one of them, for example, the new project is funding for the downtown planning initiative. So I'm sure you saw that in the packet. So I'll just sort of run through these real quickly. There's different funds, funding, I guess you could say, buckets within the, within the overall budget and where projects are funded from. In this particular category, the wastewater or sewer fund, what's before you on this slide are just a number of previously approved and ongoing projects, such as the annual sewer system rehabilitation program. And they all have certain funding numbers associated with them. The annual sewer lateral replacement project, the sewer system root foaming. So these are all the really kind of like the nuts and bolts of, of public works. But a new item on here is to, is a request for a generator, installation of a generator at several sewer pump stations. And this is one of the things that you, I think there was another request for a generator that's come up. And I think these were largely due to the, the intended turn off of electricity that happens, that, you know, we've seen happen before. So getting these generators installed really kind of aims to kind of keep things up and running, even though the power may be out. The next category of funding is the gas tax fund. And in here, there were no new items identified. So what's continually ongoing out of this particular fund is the annual street resurfacing project. Typical maintenance and annual traffic markings and stripings and the ongoing sidewalk repairing and reconstruction. And for those of you that have seen the CIP over the past number of years, this will look familiar because it tends to be, you know, reoccurring. These are just the ongoing sort of maintenance items that come out of the gas tax fund. This next category is large and quite broad. So we see a number of different things here from different city departments. And what's on this slide is quite a few, several, many, previously approved and ongoing projects. So I don't think I will read through all of these, other than to say that these are ongoing. Some of the more notable ones, or the ones that catch people's attention, is the San Carlos Avenue pedestrian safety improvements. As you know, this is the project where the number of several eucalyptus trees have been removed in order to provide a cohesive and consistent walkable path by installation of a continuous sidewalk. So that's another one. The El Camino Real rail corridor tree planting and irrigation installation is something that came out of the Tressel or Transit Village project. And continuing maintenance and ensuring that the, the conditions of approval or mitigation measures for that project are ongoing and completed. And let me just check and see if there's anything else. Oh, and of course, the bicycle pedestrian, the master plan implementation. One of the things I wanted to mention, I don't know if any of you watched the playback or the recording of the council budget study session on May 1st, but several comments that the plant, that the city council provided to staff is that they wanted to see more implementation of the bicycle pedestrian master plan. And so if you looked at some of those individual sheets for the new projects, you'll see that there are a couple of those relating to implementation of the, of the bicycle pedestrian master plan with a desire that, you know, the city should get going and really start working to implement all of these ideas that are contained in the plan to make San Carlos a more walkable city. So some of the new requests under this particular category, again, the general fund, capital projects fund, is to upgrade some existing tennis and basketball court lighting to install some cameras in the public parks for public safety, replacing some scoreboards at Burton Park. Funding of the downtown planning initiative. And as the commission may recall, this is an item that came out of the city council strategic plan to really look at a comprehensive plan for the downtown, including, you know, the myriad of things that we see happening in the downtown, such as street closures, you know, on-street dining and so forth, land uses, circulation, and hosts of other things for the downtown. So that would be a project that we would get started. Community development and planning would get started at the beginning or during the first quarter of 2022, after we make some progress with the East Side Plan. The housing element will still be underway. That will wrap up at the end of 2022. But at the beginning of 2022, we'll be kicking off a downtown planning initiative. That is the objective and strategy at this time. So we are preparing for it by requesting funding for it, as the council has directed us to do so. Guardrail installation along Burton Avenue. There's the San Carlos Quick Build Pilot Program. And I believe this is implementation of the bicycle pedestrian master plan. I'd have to look at that sheet again. But a lot, some of these are for that implementation for more walkability. Upgrading Fire Station 13, which is downtown. And then a standards of cover study, I think that's also the bike and ped plan. And then a new drone unmanned aerial vehicle. This is really for fire safety, wildfire safety objectives. And then installing compost receptible, receptacles in our downtown. And then moving on to the next bucket of funds, the Park in Lou. So this is, this is basically funding that the city receives from new development as part of paying towards establishment, the ongoing maintenance and acquisition of, of new parks in the city. So not parking the actual green parks. So this is where there is a new request to do some tennis court resurfacing at Highlands Park. And then moving on to the last of these, the Parking in Lou Fund is to fund a parking occupancy, occupancy study. We did do a parking occupancy study several years ago, quite some years ago in the downtown. And I believe this is an update of that. Housing funds. So a previously approved and ongoing project is funding for a below-market rate housing project on Cherry Street. So we received some funding and we continue to make progress on that. This is something that the Community Development Department is working on. In fact, Al Sebey, our director, and then Adam Aronson, our Economic Development and Housing Manager, have more details on this, should you have any questions. So there may be some things I can answer. But if you would like to know more, we can certainly bring this back to the Planning Commission in terms of the timing on that. But it's great. The idea is it would be another 100% affordable project, very similar to 817 Walnut, which you probably all can see is well under construction at this time. And then with respect to the Library Fund, previously approved and ongoing project is the library building emergency backup power. Again, wanting to have that backup power in place. So those comprise all of the new projects and, and ongoing ones as part of this first two-year budget cycle in, in the overall five-year CIP plan. This is the motion that the commission would make, should you choose to make it. I'm available for any questions you may have. And I'll turn it back over to the chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Just a quick comment before I ask my colleagues for any questions. I, I was just so pleased to see all these great new projects. And the city is terrifically busy. I mean, the list of good projects is robust. And I looked over, I looked them over, and I thought, these are really great projects that we're biting off. And I was just really pleased to see some of the new ones that we're going to be doing in the next couple of years. With that, do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
I do, Chair.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Lisa, thanks for the presentation. And this is my first time through the CIP budget. So if you could bear with me on just a couple of questions. Can I ask a big picture question? I mean, I appreciate, I always appreciate being told, like, what is our role? And what is the city council's role, you know, in approving these? And, and I understand that we're doing consistency findings. I'm just wondering that as the city council does its budgeting process, is there any kind of framework that it has been using to prioritize? And I know that that might differ on different items, right? Like, so there are some items, I'm sure, where individual wear and tear is going to dictate, of course, the next item to be taken, you know, to be done out of X fund is going, is going to be very obvious. Whereas things like sewer laterals, is there some kind of prioritization framework about where those updates are happening through the city? Or, you know, where for the Park in Lou funds, Highlands Tennis Courts resurfacing, you know, how does that, how do they think about that versus baseball fields? Like, where does the prioritization framework come from? Is it staff-driven, or does the city council have its own, you know, thoughts or framework to put on top of what staff recommends? Sure, that's a great question, and I'd be happy to answer that. So in terms of, you know, how do these projects sort of come to the surface and, and, and sort of develop in a way that these are the proposals and the council considers them in the context of a study session? Well, you are correct, it does start with staff first. So as you can imagine, you know, every department has its budget. And we understand the projects that we are, have been directed to work on or that we know we need to work on and need to request budget for. So what we do every year is that it really kind of starts with the city council strategic, strategic, what do they call it, like a one-day retreat, creating the city council strategic plan. So the city council will meet at the beginning of every year. Usually, it's maybe at the late January, very early February, where they will meet with staff. And this is a, a public meeting. Members of the public are, it's noticed, and people can attend and give their comments to the council in terms of what they would like to see the council focus on in terms of its strategic plan. So that strategic plan is really kind of like the first step, where, you know, aspirations and strategically, what the city should be looking on, looking at over the next year or so. You know, what are the priorities? What are the concerns? What, what's coming up? What, what do we, where are we directing the different? Where are they directing the different departments to do? You know, and we look at that every year. So during the strategic planning process, a number of projects are discussed by the city council. It's really the council's opportunity to bring forth and highlight the things that they think each city department should be working on, or that the city should be working on as a whole. So for example, that is where this discussion about the downtown planning initiative initiative really began. It wasn't a staff-driven, it was a city council-driven. So it starts there. So I think the strategic plan, I think one way to look at it is that the strategic plan really sets forth a direction on, you know, what's important to the city. It's daycare, it's affordable housing, it's, you know, wildfire safety, it's circulation, transportation, parking. There's all of these different categories, and they sort of just, those become the priority items from the council, and the council adopts it. So after the council adopts the strategic plan, we sort of, each department then understands, well, you know, the council's directed us to do a plan. I'm using the downtown planning initiative. They directed us to do that. So now we have to scope that out. And if that's what they're directing us to do, then staff needs to identify the amount of funds it would take to do that project, and then request it in the budget. So again, you know, the budget is looked at, you know, and adopted by the end of the fiscal year. So it's going to be adopted June 14th, a week from today. But the process really starts with the strategic plan at the beginning of the year. So once it, it passes the strategic, strategic planning process, each department will sit down and determine the amount of funding it needs in order to carry out the work. And it will not only come from the strategic plan, but sometimes it comes from other things that we know about in each of our respective departments or divisions, things that, you know, maybe are mandated by the state that we need to do, or things that have been sort of ongoing projects that we know we're going to need to get funding for. A lot of those are public works, right? And then all of that is, staff basically meets with the city manager and goes over it and says, these are the things that we're requesting and the reasons why. And then all of that information is given to the council. And they are prioritized, and each department has to prioritize of the things that we're asking, what are the most important? And then it goes to the council, and they look at it. And there's, you know, several meetings that the council has. This year, we had one, a special meeting for the budget, and then we had a follow-up meeting. I think, I don't know if the May 4th was on a Saturday, but one of them was on a Saturday. So they spend a couple of meetings on this to sort of sift through it, look at it. And then basically, they say, they give their feedback to staff. And then once, you know, it's sort of, you know, it's sort of kind of takes its own shape, and it gets more clarity, and there's a better idea of what's going to get funded and why. Our administrative finance director, Rebecca Mendenhall, she does a much better job explaining than I do. But essentially, that is the process. And then the city council reviews it all during a hefty study session. And they give comments, remarks, and then staff goes back and refines whatever direction the council gives them. And then we take it to the Planning Commission. So by the time the Planning Commission gets it, it's sort of been discussed. You know, the city manager is well aware, the finance director, the city council. But it's sort of a formality to, it is a formality to bring this forward in the context of a public hearing with the Planning Commission to determine that everything that's on the table is consistent with the general plan. This is one of the planning laws that were required, planning laws that directs us how we do our work. So while it is a formality, it's, it's not the first time that it's being discussed. So because it is a formality, we wanted to do all the hard work beforehand, before we bring it to the Planning Commission. So really, it's just, you know, kind of taking a look at these projects, making sure that, you know, they seem sensible, they're in line with some, with the goals, policies, and actions of the general plan, which is why staff, you know, carefully combs through the general plan and, you know, thinks about each project and tries to find or match a policy to determine, is this consistent with the overall vision of the, of the 2030 general plan? So I hope that answers a question.
Commissioner Clements, I think you're maybe on mute.
All right. Thanks for the comprehensive process discussion. So it just, it goes back to the top five or six council priorities, and then staff identifies high, medium, low, if you will. You know, because there are obviously different ways to accomplish downtown support, you know? And then the, that's really the level of my question, which is, how do we determine, you know, one strategy versus another, one improvement versus another? You know, within the confines of each one of the fund, fund constraints, and each one of the, you know, things that everybody knows needs to happen. So just wondered if there was any other framework working on in there? If I could just ask one more question and then state a preference you did offer? And so I will take you up on it. I would like to hear more about the, the Cherry Street Affordable Projects site. And, you know, at another time, that would be great to get more details on. And then I was just going to ask about the Quick Build Pilot Program. What did you say that that was part of, and what does it pertain to?
Yeah, so if you'll just give me a moment, I am going to minimize my screen a little bit so that I can, oops, sorry about that. So that I can pull it up.
Thank you.
Let me see what that quick build is. And some of these are not coming from planning, so.
Right.
Let me just pull that up, though, for you.
And I, or you could, you know, point me in the packet where it's described. I'm happy to look that up, too. I just didn't notice it.
Yeah, I'm gonna find it, and then, let's see. I'll let you know what page that is on.
Then you could see it on page 34.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Yakapony.
Thank you. First last mile connection, okay, to Caltrain. Thanks, that actually was one of my, you know, I was wondering if one of the, obviously the Bike Pad Master Plan and the, this, the council's priorities to fight climate change and promote walkability, that's another example of, you know, you, one can do thirty different things with capital budget um, to help all of those, to help walkability, to help those issues, and you can do it in different neighborhoods. How do you choose which neighborhood to do it in first, second, third? I know that El Camino Real tree planting was part of the development agreement, it sounds like, for the station development. But something like the, this pilot program is a good example as to, you know, are there other things that get driven sooner rather than later that hook to different priorities and how did that get prioritized over something else?
Yeah, that would be a question I would need to go back to, um, our Public Works Department and.
Period, that's, that's okay. You know, if there's no overriding framework or like scoring process or something to refer to, that's, that's totally fine. I, you know, in general, I support, this is something like the example that I would love to raise to the top. So it's great to see it here, that, you know, to promote walkability along our main transit corridors, to get people to Caltrain and to make it not too hot as you do that. Um, all of that, very important, I think, to promoting that walkability or biking and, you know, so that's all great.
Other questions?
Sharon's.
Well, I, I have a comment. This is David.
Yes.
And first I, I wanted to commend the staff for, um, making our job really, um, quite straightforward to, um, identify the budget items and how they conform to the, um, general plan language. It was all very explicitly mapped out. And, uh, so it's, uh, it was fairly easy for me to conclude that all the items are, are, uh, conforming to the general plan, so I don't have, um, specific concerns, um, concerns there. I'd like to second, uh, the thought about, um, giving, having the staff give us an update on the Cherry Street Affordable Housing. Because if we get an early, an early, uh, look at that, then, uh, there might be more opportunity for, for us to, um, contribute, um, contribute ideas that could, um, shape that, um, that going forward. So, um, it'd be wonderful to, um, to get that, um, early in the process.
Yes, absolutely. I will take that back and let Al and Adam know. And I'm sure that it won't be a problem getting that on the agenda in the near future. Just a status update, a little description about the project, I think would be great.
Wonderful, thank you. That, that's all I have.
Bradley here. I, I would, uh, second, uh, that both, uh, previous commissioners, um, interest in the status of Cherry Street and what we can learn about it to move ahead. Um, uh, but my comment or question is on the downtown initiative project, um, on the scale of it and the scope or, um, the process that will be, the staff will be using to move ahead. Will this be a consultant or in-house job primarily? And, um, also the scale of it, will it include the eastern side of 101 and the tracks? El Camino, uh, or just Laurel Street?
Those are both very good questions. Um, we anticipate this will probably take the form of a strategic plan. Um, so under California state law, there's specific, um, components, um, that need, would need to be included um, in order for it to be called a strategic plan. And, um, we would, um, be going out, um, with an RFP to hire consultants to help staff do it. Um, so this would be at least a two-year-long project. We hope to start in March 2022 and then conclude by March, uh, 2024. Um, so to answer your question, um, in terms of, of, um, consultants, yes, absolutely. Definitely very much needed. So we hope to have them on board by the end of, uh, the first quarter of 2022. And then, um, and then in terms of the scope of the project, we think we're going to go all the way down, um, Laurel, down Eaton, um, to the Redwood City border. And then definitely be including, um, I think it will also include El Camino Real. But that's something that we are, um, are, you know, confirming, um, at the moment. But truly, a, a big part of it is, you know, the historic core, absolutely, yes, Laurel Street. So once we, um, you know, sort of have the boundaries of this, we will be sharing that, um, with the community. In fact, one of the things the council would like for staff to do is that sometime in the summer, um, they would like for us to issue, um, a City of San Carlos Spotlight Newsletter to let the community know that this is a project that's forthcoming, um, just to start getting, you know, some awareness behind it. So that's something that we'll be doing. So we'll be answering, um, these questions and more, um, in the context of that newsletter. And certainly as I get more information, I'm happy to report back to the commission just in terms of where we're at with that, what that's looking like, what we're going to be looking at. So, um, it made its way on the paper at the beginning part of this year. It's about to get funding, so it will continue to evolve as we go forward.
Very good, thank you, Lisa.
Well, hi, everyone, Jim Yakapony here. I guess I would, uh, definitely echo the comments that, um, the great work by staff made. Um, the, the reading, actually the reading easy and the connecting the dots straightforward. So thank you for doing that. Otherwise there'd be a lot of probably flipping back and forth of the general plan, uh, line by line. So that was great. I'm, I was just curious, a little bit of context, Lisa. And I'm on, I guess it's, uh, six A B in the PAC, which is the, kind of the bottom page of the Capital Improvement Program Budget Detail. And I'm seeing that, um, so roughly for twenty-one, twenty-two, the fiscal year, about seventeen million in capital and then four million the following year. So maybe two questions. What would the prior years have looked like? Is seventeen million a huge number, about the same, lower? And second is, is there any reason for what I guess looks like a falloff going down to about a quarter of the spend in the next fiscal year versus this one? Or is this just a set of placeholders and it'll get updated next year? And that four point one million will be refreshed? So can you help me with those two things?
Yeah, that's a good question. So for example, um, I'll go back to the downtown planning initiatives. The staff is estimating, um, the project will cost, um, one million, um, to do, you know, to hire consultants and get the work done. It could be lower, it could be higher, but we won't know until we get some proposals back, uh, with, um, some budgets attached to that, right? So when we make our request, we know we're going to start in the fiscal year, uh, twenty-one, uh, in, in twenty-one, twenty-two, right? So when we, um, ask for funding, we're not asking for half of it in the first year and then half of it in twenty-two, twenty-three. If we had that four million would be four million, five hundred, right? Um, but instead we're asking for all of it at once. That way we have the money, it's already been appropriated and we can use it. Sometimes projects, you know, get off to a fast start and you're spending more early on and it tapers down. It just really depends. The reason why we asked for it all in the first year is because we didn't want to have any of it tied up to a twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, um, budget. So I'm sure there's other projects kind of that have been presented with that sort of, um, frame of mind where they want all the money now rather than to request, you know, split it down, you know, or half and half, right? Otherwise it would be, uh, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, right? It would be eleven thousand, oh, excuse me, eleven million one year and then eleven million the other year. So what I think you're seeing is that just the full funding kind of going right into, you know, being directly appropriated and available for you. So it's kind of in a fund and it's just waiting, you know, to get expended. And it's not tied up to any sort of, um, later, uh, fiscal year where it would be available at that time. So, um, that's going to be my answer to you on that. Um, however, it could be, um, that maybe the seventeen million is a little bit more than what we've seen in past years. Um, I'd have to go back and look at, um, prior budgets to see, you know, traditionally, you know, what does the first two years look like and what are the amounts look, looking like? And if that's something that, um, the planning commission is interested in, I can keep that in mind, um, for future, um, you know, for future hearings on this item, just to kind of give you more information. And certainly I'm happy to hear that because the, if the commission would like to know, well, where were we last year? And where are we now? Or what's been our five-year spending plan? If this is the kind of information that kind of helps frame the picture for the commission, I can certainly definitely add a lot more to this item. But again, you know, it's, um, that sort of may be complete a little bit into the funding, but it helps kind of give a picture. So while you're not determining the funding, you're really just looking at the projects for consistency with the general plan. Um, it is something that I can include in the, in the future and future presentations. Or even as an informational item, if you're interested, I can easily get those numbers for you from finance and just show you a little bit of a, of, um, of a, of a time, you know, basically what the numbers have been over the past. You know, two years, three years, five years. Um, if that's something that would be helpful for the commission to sort of be aware of, it's, it's information, it's public. I can definitely, you know, package it and bring it back. Or at least send it to the commission as an informational item.
Sure, thank you, Lisa. I, I really appreciate the, kind of the current year context and, you know, this notion of getting, putting in for the amount now so that the project can get started. And then as, as funds are needed, they can be drawn, drawn on because they're all approved. That makes complete sense. And on, on the other point, I, I think it's just, um, I don't have an appreciation of the level of reinvestment from all of the, the funding sources that we make every year. And so, um, I can't ju- judge whether seventeen million i- is a big number, a small number. And, um, I, for one, would be interested to know.
This should be pretty easy to put together. Our, our folks in finance will help me out. They'll do all the work. And I can definitely send it off as an informational item, not a problem.
Thank you.
And to build on Commissioner Yakapony's, uh, comment, without looking at the specific number, seventeen million, I'm guessing in the last year with the pandemic, the city management put in place restrictions or constraints of some sort on budgets and possibly even capital expenditures. I'd be curious to know, what is the general outlook? And are some of these restrictions still anticipated to remain in place? Or are they, uh, are, are things looking better? And maybe this seventeen million is a little larger than last year because the restraints are coming off? Because we're, we're feeling somewhat more confident with our, with our ability to generate income as a city? I, I'd be just curious as to, um, how the city sees ourselves, sees itself being positioned, uh, after this year of pandemic.
Yeah, I, I will send the commission the link and try to find that discussion, um, with a timestamp so that you can look at that because that was a discussion, um, item that, um, our finance administrative, administrative services director, Rebecca Mendenhall, um, had a discussion with, with the council. Um, so I can send that as an informational item. So you don't have to weed through all of the, the hours of the, of the budget study session and be able to hear that particular conversation directly. So I can send that to you as well.
Thank you, that, that's very helpful. And the one, uh, additional comment I had is, um, one of the projects that rose to the top for me um, has to do with the, uh, sort of proactive thinking that the city is, um, moving towards with respect to backup power generation, you know, in anticipation that there will be rolling blackouts, that there will be, uh, blackouts that we don't even anticipate. And I think as a service and a safety issue, to maintain power at the sewer, uh, what was it called? The sewer pump station and the library seems a very prudent idea. And, um, I just wanted to commend the city for thinking about that. Any additional questions of Lisa before we see if there was anyone in the waiting room from the public who wanted to comment?
I had one question, Chair, um, Garbi, I hope you don't mind. I just wanted to follow back up on the parking study. And I think, Lisa, you had said that with the Parking and Lou Fund, that it was a continuation or a part two of the previously done parking study. So, and it's an update of the downtown. So is the focus going to be on the downtown and is it going to extend, um, further south? Kind of as you were saying, the downtown planning initiative was actually going to go all the way down to the south part of the city. Is there, and is there a reason that we wanted to do that study at this time?
Unfortunately, I don't have the answers to those questions, but I can definitely get them for you. So, um, I'll have to talk to some other city staff that, that have that more detailed information or that have the answers to those questions and I can send that to the commission as an informational item as well. And I apologize if I don't have the answer.
Oh, no worries, I was just curious. I know that, you know, a lot of businesses find parking very important. And I know with the circulation plan and the conversation about Laurel, um, and, you know, a lot of people like Laurel shut down, the way it is, um, to walk. But I also know that businesses find the parking important. And so just kind of wondering whether there is a connection there or whether there are going to be findings um, as to whether the lots across El Camino were actually used and were effective for the businesses that, you know, they've kind of been created to help support. So just wondering kind of on that, was this always the anticipated timing? Or what the genesis of it, of this timing was?
I'll look into that for you.
Thanks.
And, and then let the whole commission know. Yeah, thank you.
All right, let's move forward and see if there, Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room who would like to make a comment? And if there is, you can, uh, use the raised hand function or you can, uh, press star nine on your phone. Is there anyone in the waiting room, Sarah?
Yes, Debbie.
Yes, hi, thank you so much for this information and the opportunity to participate. I'm, uh, asking about the page twenty-one on the General Fund Capital Projects, C nine eight twenty-eight, related to the annual storm drain management budget. If you look at it, it looks like you've only spent a thousand eighteen dollars so far this year, but it's been budgeted for five hundred and seventy thousand before, uh, June the thirtieth. And so I wanted to know if there are plans to improve, use those funds to improve the storm drain. Um, on Pulgas Creek where I live, a number of us are concerned about additional construction, say for example on Black Mountain or along the creek, um, using a lot more water, exiting a lot more water into the storm drains. And so we just wanted to be sure that there's adequate funds and attention to public safety. So that would be one question. And the second question is, with regard to the pump stations, is that for stormwater management or just for sewer? Because we were concerned that if the pumps fail during an electrical outage during heavy rains, that would increase the risk of flooding along the various creeks. So if you could just comment about that, we would appreciate it.
Thank you, Debbie.
And through the chair, would you, would the commission like for me to do respond?
Please, yes.
Okay. Um, with respect to the amount of monies, uh, being spent on storm drain management, I believe, Debbie mentioned C, the project C ninety-eight twenty-eight.
Debbie mentioned C, the project C ninety-eight twenty-eight. I, I don't have the detailed information on that. That is something that I can certainly relay to our city engineer or Public Works Director, Stephen Machida, and see if I can follow back up with Debbie on that matter. And I know Debbie has my email address. Nice to see you, Debbie. And we can certainly try and get you answers to the questions that you asked this evening. I unfortunately don't want to respond because they're not in my department and I don't have accurate information to share. So I would prefer to talk to the director and our city engineer briefly and then follow up via email, if that's okay, to both of those questions. And also, the other question about the pump station is, is sewer or stormwater? So I can certainly follow up on that, Debbie, if that is okay with you.
Absolutely. No problem. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, Sarah, is there anyone else in the waiting room who'd like to make a comment?
Not at this time.
All right, then I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved Bradley.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, roll call.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ru?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, we've heard from staff and a member of the public. I'll open up the meeting now for discussion amongst Commissioners. Who would like to start?
I just have one, one question. Bradley here. Sometime a year or two ago, we, the city hired consultants from down south Pasadena firm, and they came up and did a study of wayfinding, citywide wayfinding, I think we called it. And I haven't seen much, if anything, happen out of that. And I don't know how I missed it, or did, did it get completed or implemented in some way?
Yes, Commissioner Bradley, that project has not been completed, to my understanding. This is a project that is being managed by Adam Aronson, our Economic Development and Housing Manager. So I can certainly, you know, he's also, you know, maybe we can have him talk about both. He comes back for the Cherry Street Affordable Housing Project. We can also ask him to give an update on wayfinding, if the Commission is interested in that. But I don't believe that's been completed. And I couldn't give you the specifics as to why. That would be something I'd need to ask Adam Aronson about.
Good, because I think it was a valuable project and it would fit in with several other things about pedestrian and downtown and the whole city. Thank you.
All right, hearing, is there any, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on this. And thank you, Lisa, for putting that on the screen.
I'd be happy to make the motion. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two, I believe, and twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three capital improvement plan is in conformance with the City of San Carlos's general plan, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
All right, and I'll second that. Lisa, roll call.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ru?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. Lisa, staff did an outstanding job on that agenda item. I learned so much. The packet was really clear in echoing my colleagues' comments. It was very easy to connect the dots. And I really appreciated the work that went into the preparation of that item.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Lisa.
All right, moving on to item seven, reports, correspondence and general information. Seven A, report on recent city council actions.
Yes, Chair Garvey, I have a couple of things that I would like to share with the Commission concerning the city council. And this is not so recent, but a little recent. So on May twenty-fourth, the city council discussed, you know, the idea of coming back into in-person meetings in the city council chambers at our city hall location. And the idea was that to consider the option of having a hybrid meeting whereby it could be in person, but also with the option of using Zoom to attend, you know, have basically virtual attendance. So this is a follow-up to an informational item that I sent to the Commission earlier today. The council is looking at going forward with a hybrid meeting on their first meeting after the summer recess. So that would be August twenty-third. So following council's lead, the Planning Commission, its first hybrid meeting would be scheduled for, I believe it's Tuesday, September the seventh. So it's a Tuesday because of the Labor Day holiday. So I just wanted to make an announcement here because I know that some folks may be watching or will watch the playback at a later date. So I don't know if there was any kind of announcement made, but I did speak with our, our, our city clerk, Crystal. And she will be working with staff to sort of, you know, kind of figure out the nuts and bolts of how we would do a hybrid meeting. And certainly, if there's any comments or questions you have, feel free to send me an email. And I will be collecting those and then bringing those forward to the city clerk so that we can be as prepared, best prepared as we can in really addressing any questions or comments of any concern at all regarding that. I just wanted to let the Commission know that this was discussed with the council. And they were open to coming back with a hybrid meeting, of course, following all local and state requirements and provisions for that, and modifying anything that we need to do, you know, anything necessary that we need to do to prepare for that. So I just wanted to bring that up sooner rather than later.
Lisa, I had a quick clarification on that. The hybrid, the ability to attend either remotely or in person would apply for members of the community and members of the Planning Commission?
That's a good question. I was wondering that myself, like, would it, you know, and, you know, you could even lend it all the way to staff. So we're, yeah, I'm going to get clarification on that in terms of, you know, what allowances the city is going to, you know, be giving with respect to that. I don't know the answer, but you're, you're reading my mind because that's my question as well. I thought this question might come up of the Commissioners, should the Commissioners want an option themselves? Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that. It's just that it had been discussed and we're looking at that and getting prepared for that. But in terms of how that would actually be structured, I need to still get more information on that. And that was certainly a question that I was anticipating. So thank you for bringing that up.
Commissioner Clements, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to comment on my understanding of the, of the law on this because I staff a commission where I work, and this has been a hot topic for many months. And my understanding is that the hybrid version is allowable under the Brown Act currently only for attendees. It is not allowable for Commissioners. So for instance, if I were not feeling well and I wanted to zoom into the meeting and everyone else come in personal and in person, that would not be permissible under current state law. So that's my understanding and what our, our attorneys at work have advised us. That is, it is not clear to me what the rule is for staff, but I'm assuming for staff, they have to follow what the Commissioners are doing because they have to prep the room for the Commissioners. That said, there is a bill currently in the Assembly from Alex Lee, I believe his name is, from San Jose. And I'm blanking on the number, has a lot of threes in it, that actually addresses this directly. That would allow for Commissioners to also be remote or combination. And so, or it could be made to read that way. So anyway, this is a very hot topic, but I, I believe the Brown Act currently allows council members to call in remotely, but not Commissioners for some reason. I don't know why. But that doesn't mean state law could not be changed. And I would love it if an attorney from the City of San Carlos told us that that was not correct and, you know, that we have more flexibility. That'd be great to be wrong. So, yeah, thanks for advising us, Lisa.
Yeah, this is, this is really good information. Thank you for that, Kristen. And whatever we do present will be, you know, provided in the context of a memo from our city clerk or, you know, obviously, you know, looked at by our city attorney. So this isn't something that staff is just working on the back trying to figure out. We want to make sure that we're doing this in the right way, consistent with whatever laws or procedures are established concerning this topic. So thank you for sharing that. I didn't realize that there was a bill, but there's always things happening and not surprisingly around this particular topic. My purpose of bringing it up was just to, just to do that, just to bring it up and let you know that this is at least the target that the city council is looking at. So as we get more information and as our city attorney advises us, I will continue to update the Commission along the way. Thank you. If there's no other questions on that, just a couple of upcoming items that I thought I'd share. I know this is report on recent city council actions, but in the spirit of communication and information, I did want to share that not only will the budget be adopted on June fourteenth at the city council meeting, there's also a couple of other items that the Commission might be interested in. And the first one is the council will be having a discussion about the street closure in downtown. So if you're interested in that or would like to follow along, there will be a staff report. The council packet should be released this Thursday, and there will be report on that particular agenda item. And you can look at that and then decide if you, you know, wanted to tune in or watch, watch at home. So that's on the street closure downtown. And then the other item, and I think Andrea might have mentioned it when I was out, about the protected tree ordinance, and that there is an urgency ordinance being adopted. This was an item that was, came about through city council direction and some questions and on our protected tree or heritage tree, protected tree ordinance. So they will be located, again, the staff report will be out this Thursday. I don't have the details on that because I wasn't the staff person working on that, but that's coming out of community development, both staff reports. So those will be published this Thursday in the city council packet and on the agenda for city council next Monday, June fourteen. And those conclude the items that I have to share for this agenda item seven A.
All right, thank you. Moving on to B, Planning Commission comments or reports. Do any of my comment, colleagues have any comments or reports? And I see Commissioner Clements has her hand up.
Oh, thank you. I had a quick question for Lisa, actually, on A and on the street closure item. What's the vehicle that effectuated the street closure? And is it not a land use or a permit issue that would come before Planning Commission? It's instead a city council decision? Just want to clarify.
Yeah, this is a, yeah, this is the, it's a discussion. Well, essentially, there's sort of two origins for the current condition on Laurel Street. One is a pilot project that the city council elected to initiate several years back. And this was to allow a maximum of three restaurant operators to develop, you know, what are called parklets in some other jurisdictions. In some of their jurisdictions, they're, they're public and anyone can sit there. But in this case, they were defined as parklets for restaurant operators. So there were certain parameters that were adopted by the council, certain design components that were adopted. There was a committee established, and this pilot project was intended to run for a specific timeframe. So what happened is that I think the third restaurant operator was selected, but in the beginning, there was kind of like a call for projects where different restaurant operators could present something, and then three would be selected. As we all probably know by now, Town was the first one that, that sort of was built. So they obviously submitted something and got it reviewed and approved. And it was intended to run for a specific time. And then another one across the street was one that was approved. And I think the third one just got approved for, or will be soon approved for, it's the, oh, gosh, I'm blanking on it. Oh, I'm so sorry. It's the, it's the hamburger place right across from Pete's. It used to be on East San Carlos Avenue. I'm blanking.
Oh, Sneakers.
Sneakers, thank you. For some reason, I was blanking on the name. So that would be the third. So this, you know, was kind of like, you know, our first look at just kind of a pilot program even before, you know, the pandemic, you know, we had no idea what would happen with the pandemic. And then the second originator of this is, of course, the pandemic and allowing, you know, many restaurant operators to, you know, put up spaces for outdoor service so they can keep their businesses in operation. So we kind of have two origins for how this situation came about, and including, you know, lots of discussions with the council that have been on the agenda previously this year talking about it. And I think the item coming before the council, the fourteenth, is to kind of solidify the next steps, you know, how long to keep it in place, what's the recommended timing for that. So this will be a pretty, you know, robust, and I think it'll give some clear direction on what's going to happen to, to, to that, to those, to that particular area, at least for a designated timeframe. So that's as much information that I know without preparing in advance and getting all the specifics. But the staff report will be out this Thursday that you can look at. And I can send a link to the Commission to remind you all to take a look if you're interested.
Great. Thank you for the information.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes, thank you, Chair Garvey. I just wanted to advise staff and colleagues that the upcoming Planning Commission meeting, I'm going to unfortunately have to be absent. I guess one of the good and bad things of getting back toward normal is some evening commitments, and this one's been unavoidable. So I will not be in attendance on Monday, the, I think it's the eighteenth, the eighteenth? The next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you for letting me know. That's great. For everyone now.
Any other Planning Commission comments or reports? I have one, but I'll see if first if anyone else has anything. Or on, I have one item. On May twenty-sixth, I attended a workshop hosted by the City of San Carlos. This was on the focused general plan update and specifically the housing element that is being updated. This was an excellent workshop. I'm really glad I attended. I learned a lot. And Lisa and her staff and the consultants did a, did a really great job. And I'm glad I took the time to, to attend. And moving on to correspondence, do we have any correspondence to report?
None this evening.
All right. And ending with planning staff comments, reports and updates on current projects.
Yes, I have a bit to share. So thank you for pointing out that we had a workshop on May twenty-sixth. Is there, it was, we thought it went well as well, good workshop. And there's some good information. So if anyone's interested in watching the playback, we don't have that available up on the website yet, but I hear from our consultants, we'll be getting that up, I think, by, by the end of this week. And so I'll send you a, a notice when it's available online, should you choose to watch it. And of course, we're going to be heading into study sessions with the Planning Commission on all of this. But, you know, this is a great way to sort of follow the project along from its origin. But, you know, this is a great way to sort of follow the project along from its origins, you know, before it gets to the commission. So I just wanted to, thank you, Chair, for pointing that out. And then with respect to the other long-range planning project that we're working on, the East Side Innovation District Vision, Innovation District Vision Plan project, we are having our second workshop this Wednesday. And this will be a virtual workshop, and you can register at sancarlosinnovation.org. And I know that I, that there may be interest from the commission to attend, and that's certainly fine, but because of the Brown Act, we have to limit it to two commissioners. And so far, I've only heard of one commissioner. Not that you all should be, you know, or have to watch it live. You can also watch the playback. So I have heard from Vice Chair Ruth that he will likely be attending. So there is space for one more, should anyone want to attend live. But if not, that will also be recorded and available up on the project website following the workshop. So I just wanted to point that out. So if you're interested, you can email me, or I don't know if two people will email me, then I'd have to get back and say, figure it out. We just need to have one, we have room for one more. But just, you know, be mindful of the Brown Act, is what I can share on that. And then at the next meeting on June 21st, which I am almost quite shocked that it's already the end of the first half of the year of 2021 already. But our next meeting on June 21st, we have one project that is on the agenda, and this is at 777 Industrial. This is the Primo Honda site. And as some of you may know, the Honda site hasn't been there for very many years. It's quite new, in fact. However, there is a proposal to convert this space into a life sciences building. And this is a project that Principal Planner Lisa Costa-Sanders has been working on, so she's the project planner on that. The notice will be going out in the paper today. That is an item on the agenda, and because it's, excuse me, will be on the next agenda. But because it's not on tonight's agenda, I'll just remind you to not ask me any questions about that, because we can't discuss it. It'll be on the agenda for June 21st. And then the other item on the agenda for June 21st is our annual election of officers. So this will be the time where the commission will get to elect a chair and a vice chair, a member to serve on the Residential Design Review Committee, or RDRC. And then lastly, an alternate that can serve on the Residential Design Review Committee should the primary designate not be able to make it. So there's essentially four slots that need to be filled. So that'll be on the, on the agenda for June 21st. And then after those decisions have been made, the new chair would take the seat at the first meeting of July. Actually, everyone would take their places at the first Planning Commission meeting in July, or the first RDRC meeting in July. So I just wanted to remind the commission of that. We do this at the last meeting in June of every year. So all of you will eventually get a chance to serve as chair. So this is how it works. Let's see, I think that's it.
Commissioner Yakaponi, I think you have a raised hand.
Thank you, Chair Garvey. Lisa, just one point on this coming Wednesday's East Side Vision workshop. I have a reservation, so maybe I'm the second Planning Commissioner in attendance.
Okay, so maybe this would be a good time to find out if any other commissioners have RSVP'd or were interested.
I am not available, so I look forward to looking at the, listening to the recording.
Okay. I'm also not available. Okay.
I'm unavailable too, but I'll look at it later.
Okay, well, then this works out perfectly then. It looks like we'll have Vice Chair Ruth and Commissioner Yakaponi in attendance for our two members of the Planning Commission. So glad that you both will be able to join. It's great. So we're in good shape.
And Lisa, just a process question. With Commissioner Yakaponi not being at the next meeting, and with the election of officers happening at the next meeting, I'm not exactly sure how that, how that would work. So at some point, I'll need to more fully understand that, or all of my colleagues, including Commissioner Yakaponi, they want to more fully understand how that, how it works, if we're not all here.
Well, it's treated similar to other agenda items, so as long as there's a quorum, a vote can be taken. I mean, ideally, it would be great to have all commissioners here, but we can certainly still have that item on the agenda. I could check with the city clerk's office to see if I could postpone that to the first meeting in July, which would be July, well, that would probably be July 6th, the Tuesday. Let me get back to the commission on that. If there's, if that is the commission's preference, I can certainly see if I can postpone it. But if not, it will need to be on the 21st, as long as there's a quorum here. That's essentially how it would be.
I think that would be helpful to run this by the clerk and to let us know. I understand and accept and agree with the quorum issue. It was more, what if someone, what was nominated, but they weren't able to express their opinion on whether they wanted it or not because they weren't here, and if someone really wanted to? It's difficult to have a discussion on a year-long commitment that might involve someone who's not there, even if there's a quorum present to vote on it. I'm just not sure how I'd handle that.
Okay, let me check with the clerk, and I will follow up with you, Ellen. And whatever information I get back, I can just share some information. I'll take rest of the commission.
Okay.
I could also comment, I mean, I think if Commissioner, it was Yakaponi, he could not come. Sorry, who could not be there?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi is not available.
Oh, right. I mean, you could express your interest or lack of interest in all four positions. And then I think my only question is, does the person nominated for each role need to say something before a vote is taken? Because if that were the case, then anyone absent would be at a disadvantage if nominated for something.
Right, I mean, that.
If not, you know.
I think that is maybe the, a very sort of obvious point in that staff would advise the commission, it wouldn't be best to nominate someone who wasn't available, because then, you're right, we wouldn't know if they would be able to commit for the year, especially if it concerns an appointment to the RDRC, which starts at 5:30, and then, you know, it's a back-to-back meeting, you know, for a year. So that's something that we definitely encourage, you know, when, we leave it up to the commission. Staff doesn't really navigate this so much, is that, the way that I've seen it work, the commission, you know, speaks amongst themselves. And if somebody would like to decline a nomination, they usually will say, well, I'm not able to because of this is going to be a busy year, or whatever reasons there may be. And they wouldn't be able to serve in that capacity, or they might defer to someone else. So this is a conversation that can happen at that time. But certainly, to have a full discussion with all five members is ideal. So, and that is true. If you find that you're not interested in any of the four positions, then you can certainly share that with staff, and we can make sure that the other commissioners know when we get to that agenda item. If, you know, any commissioner were to be absent, that's probably how we'd handle it. But if there's an ability for me to kind of extend this out a little bit, you know, I'm definitely happy to do that. That is not a problem with staff at all.
Thank you. That was very helpful, Lisa, and I'm really glad we all got to have this discussion, so that going into the next meeting, we have some idea of what the options are. And I very much appreciate you getting back to us.
Okay, I'll look into it.
Any other planning staff comments?
And for me?
Bradley would just like to thank the staff and their good work on the CIP, and thank the commissioners, my fellow commissioners, on your thoughtful suggestions and questions, as usual. It's my honor to work with this group. You all know I've been a planner for more than half a century, and I've worked with dozens of commissions and staffs and councils and governments, and you're the best. That's why I call it the City of Good Planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. And on that positive note, we are adjourned, and we will see you back here in two weeks.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.